Good evening Nancy, how are you?
Good, it's Connie and Nancy, we are together.
Oh, great, okay.
Can you see us?
I can see Nancy, I can't see Connie.
Hi.
Connie, there you are.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, we decided we were together for another meeting, so we decided to do this together.
Makes sense.
We're family, so it's okay.
And hello Ryan, how are you?
Why aren't we seeing you though?
I don't know, I can see myself.
Oh no.
Ryan, can you see me?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay. Your video on Nancy, so you should in theory be able to see everything.
My video is on.
Yeah, mine, mine.
There you go.
Oh. Okay, there we are.
Hi. Hi.
Hello, hello.
Hello.
Hi Don. Now we have Paul, is that good?
That's better. Paul, how are you? Uh oh.
Don't you have to be, don't you have to be six feet apart?
We are.
Yeah.
We are.
A female six feet, right?
Did you know we're family?
We're all family, we're all family.
You gonna get tape measure out?
Nah, shoot. I just didn't want the coronavirus to get y'all.
You know, we've been together since the get-go.
So you're eating in front of us?
What you eating?
Reese's Pieces.
Yum.
Oh, let's get our Snickers.
That was at the other place. You did?
I was hoping Don would bring us some snacks, but he didn't.
No snacks. No snacks.
I got my Tennessee Volunteer Orange on.
Okay, good.
Any Tennesseans out there?
We're eating now too, we got Snickers.
It is the dinner hour after all.
We can't count on Paul bringing any snacks.
I know.
Aw man Connie. I can eat them though.
I know.
And you've been good to me, you carried me a few times. Oh, there's James Guerrero.
You look serious.
It's the angle of the camera.
So Ryan, how's that baby?
Good, yeah, just uh, we have the, the neighbor girl across the street. She comes over every morning to babysit all day, so I mean, Alyssa sit in the office and work and hang out in the house.
Cool.
Yep.
Where's the baby now, can we see, can we see, show the baby?
No, he's at dinner. Out there eating dinner and then straight up to bath and bedtime at seven.
Yeah, our Mother's Day, our, our, our son and daughter-in-law came with their three little boys. And so then our son who's, you know, has always got some little sneaky thing to say. He says to Linda, says um, well, you know, and they were gonna leave the two little boys with us over for the next couple of days, and so they just went back today. And, and then, so Scott said, well, you need to be able to start taking care of three. And the youngest one just turned one, so he's just a little guy. Well, he is really a mama's boy still at this point, he doesn't wanna go to anyone. And it says, well, when he learns to come to me, he says, well, you have to do it pretty soon because there's four. If I don't know, daughter-in-law is pregnant, like, six weeks pregnant. They're number four, so they'll, they'll have four, well, they have three boys now, and they'll have a fourth. And they'll be, and the oldest one won't have turned five yet.
Oh goodness, they're crazy.
This is what coronavirus does.
Is that what it is? Yeah.
So it actually looks like we've got everybody here, that's great. Were people able to either work with the planning, I'm sorry, the IT department and get stuff fixed up for tonight and future meetings? Or you guys got it all figured out at least, where you'll be good?
I took care of me, thank you very much.
I didn't have more issues, will you?
Well, Paul had issues.
Hi Dave.
So the only person that's not on the call yet is Paul Bokey, our council member liaison, I'm not sure if he'll make it tonight or not. Got everybody else, that's great.
Do I need to run down the street and grab him?
Are you guys neighbors?
He's a little ways away, but yeah.
Okay. And then I also emailed to everybody this afternoon, the three PowerPoints I'll be walking through, so in case, for whatever reason, you're not seeing it on the screen, I'm gonna share it, but if for whatever reason you want it on another screen or whatever, you've got that, that way too. And Karen provided everybody the full packet, I think, last week.
So with everyone on video, if you have a question, just raise your hand, and then I'll acknowledge you, yeah, just like that Connie, good job. And then I'll recognize you, and then you can speak, so we don't speak over top each other and all that good stuff.
We are live on YouTube as well, so last time we had a little bit of technical difficulty there, but we are live tonight.
So is anybody on?
Us.
I don't, I mean, anybody else?
Not right now, but I'm assuming actually there will be, there's been some interest, not only in that one comprehensive plan amendment, number five, but also there's been some out to the city regarding some of the annual development regulation amendments that I think about tonight too, so we'll see.
Tiffany?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna interject on the development amendments to make one addition regarding adult family homes.
Okay. But you sound good tonight, that's great.
I'm glad. I went through the, the state codes, state amendments one more time, and I found a, a thing that got added.
Okay.
I'll talk about that when the time comes.
Okay.
Well, we all got on good and everything's up and running, so.
Yeah, if I had music to play, I'd play it for you.
The agenda they're using tonight, still one dated May 6th.
There's one dated May 13th, but it's pretty much identical.
Yeah, Karen emailed it last week. There's two emails from Karen, back to back, one is the agenda.
Yeah, they weren't in the content folder, they were just in the.
Yeah, that's correct.
I can probably pull the other one up. Let me see if I can. I think it was a bunch of stuff sent. This has an attachment. I don't have the attachment, it says it was there, but it went on.
What date?
Did you find it Paul?
No.
It's last, last week.
She sent it, it was the same PC meeting. Let me just, let me see if it's on this one.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can, go ahead.
Just making sure I can do roll call, that's all, thank you.
Okay.
No, this was that short course ones.
Yeah, I got that.
Yeah. This should be, but it's not, sure.
Then when we get going, Paul and Connie and Nancy, if you just mute your microphones, and then if you, like I said, if you have questions, you can raise your hand, and it will just done, you can unmute it, and then I'll recognize you and you can talk. That way we don't hear a whole bunch of background noise, when you ladies wanna laugh and giggle there.
Or eat Snickers.
Yeah. Rappers, Paul's rappers. Yes. Oh no, your microphone, what happened?
What changed from five minutes ago?
Oh my goodness.
Now you're having a problem?
Yeah, that's bad, it's just all of a sudden is, I don't know when we go live, I'll come, but yeah. Okay.
He's had this curse ever since, I'm not sure what's going on with his system at home.
Yeah, because it was, he was just good.
Yeah.
How was that? Yeah, it's good. I, I did find the, tonight's commission agenda, it is, it is under the, the city clerk's file, May 13th, and the materials are there. Yep. Few more minutes and we'll get started.
When are they gonna pick the new commissioner to be with us, to take Chris's place?
I'm not sure. They've just turned his video off, Dave, do you happen to know, are you there?
Yeah, I heard the question, I have no information at this point on, on who a new commissioner would be, I know a couple of resumes have been submitted to the city mayor to review, but I've not heard anything.
You guys have your joint study session with the city council on May 26th, so possibly then, I don't know.
May 26th?
Yes, it's a Tuesday because of Memorial Day, it's the city council meeting, that's a joint study session.
I might not be able to make it.
Okay.
I, I will let you know by Friday.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think I've got a, something to fly to Phoenix if I can still fly and get down there, and so yeah.
Okay.
I thought we had a stay-at-home order until the 31st.
Well, you do, but.
Oh, you're a different, oh, you have new rules.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Well, even if you're in Phoenix, could you call in maybe?
Yeah, I probably could.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good possibility, it's a, yeah, at about 100 degrees, yeah, I'll be out on the patio somewhere probably, and yeah.
Okay, Nancy's got her hand up.
Oh, go ahead.
Connie.
Yes Connie.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So, is it gonna be at 6:15?
Invitation is for 6:15 because the meeting starts at 6:30, so this is just to make sure we're all here, ready to go.
Okay, so, but it's on a Tuesday.
It is, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let me start over, for the 26th, that will be at 7:00 PM, because it's a regularly scheduled city council meeting, and they start at 7:00.
Okay.
Let me add a little bit to that, but we normally start syncing up on Zoom by 6:45. 6:45? Okay.
And in Arizona, that might be one or two hours ahead, I'm not sure.
That's right. We'll see, all that good stuff, so, okay, so we'll get started and call the planning commission to order this Wednesday, May 13th, 2020. If Karen, you could call roll please.
Connie Coleman Lackady. John Dinnman.
I'm here.
Present.
James Guerrero.
Present.
Nancy Hudson-Eckles.
Present.
Ryan Pearson.
Here.
Paul Wegman.
Present.
You have form.
Great, thank you so much. Before us, we have the minutes of April 29th, looking for a motion.
I'm moving except the minutes is written.
Okay, Mr. Wegman made a motion, do I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Connie Coleman Lackady, second, any discussion? Comments? Hearing or seeing none, all those in favor by saying aye or raising your hand?
Aye.
Opposed, opposed? Hearing none? The minutes of April 29th passed as written, thank you. Any changes to our agenda tonight?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And number five, public comment. There again, at this time, all public comment had to be submitted to the city prior to our meeting tonight. So we've received only one document, was that under the public comment period? Tiffany?
Yes, because the public hearing regarding the 2020 comprehensive plan amendments was closed. You did receive a letter that was emailed out to you after the hearing was closed, would, would be considered comment. And we let that applicant and the person who sent it know that it was, it would be sent to you, and then they will communicate with the council as well. And then Karen, was there any other public comment received to you by email?
Yep, I did.
None.
Okay, good, thank you, so then we'll close the public comment period then. And number six, unfinished business, the action on the 2020 comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment docket.
All right, so planning commission members, just a moment, and it'll start to show my screen hopefully for you.
Yes.
And first right there, you see the agenda for this evening. And the next should be the see if that works better there, the presentation regarding the comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment package. This is the third or fourth time that's come, this has come before you, in this year. But on March 4th, you had a public hearing, at that point, there were 13 amendments that you were getting testimony provided on. There was testimony submitted live and also in writing, and later on in the presentation, I have a table that summarizes that, those comments. After that public hearing, the, oops, I'm sorry, the community and economic development staff reviewed its recommendations, updated them for two of the applications, number five and number seven. And then we also combined several of the 13 amendments together, because they were about the same topic, and so now we have a total of nine amendments for your consideration this evening, two are text and seven are map amendments. And then in our last meeting, which for you now was two weeks ago, there were, there was a discussion by the commission, but no action was taken tonight in your packet, and hopefully you've got that in front of you as well as Ms. Deveraux sent it to you, but there is a resolution for you to consider and take action on. Just note that within there, because of the discussion that's been had about application number five, there's three options right now listed in the resolution. And so it would be up to the commission before you, if you take action tonight, before you do so, to decide which of those options you'd like to have in your resolution, or if you'd like to take some other action and incorporate it into the resolution. So here you've got just a summary of the public comment that was received back in March, it was a while ago now. For number four, there was one person, Harmon Construction, Alex Harmon, supporting the amendment number four. Number five is where most of the comment was received, and this is the one that's along 59th Avenue and Silicon Boulevard, proposing to rezone things, excuse me, from NC2, originally it was gonna be to MF1, multifamily one. And so the number of people that testified, most if not all, were in opposition to this idea, either because of their existing use of their property or planned use of their property. And then, oops, on number six, which was the Spring Brook neighborhood one, there was a question from Mr. Tim Polk, asking about whether this was going to move forward, he was in favor of number six. And then on March, or sorry, April 29th, the planning commission had its discussion about these same amendments, once they were reorganized and re-submitted to you as nine instead of 13. And again, you had some conversation about number five, and Commissioner Guerrero was asking whether, instead of MF1 or MF2 or ARC, which one of those would best meet the intent behind the original amendment coupled with what the city council was wanting to do with this rezone. So again, there was conversation had, but no action was taken by the planning commission at your last meeting to create a, either a standing recommendation or to amend what was included within the resolution. The rest of the comments didn't have, or excuse me, the rest of the amendments didn't have any comments submitted in writing or orally. So here's a summary of the recommendations coming from staff to you this evening. To approve number one, which is text in the comprehensive plan regarding planned development districts and also in the county or city code. Number two is a privately initiated amendment, and this was submitted requesting multifamily three zone, and the recommendation back is multifamily two, and that is based on conversation with representatives of the applicant, so this is not a surprise to them. Number three and number four were both recommended approval. Number five again is that one that's the most complicated and has had the most feedback. Here are three new options that staffs provided for you for this evening. And so number one is a brand new one, and Mr. Brewer might wanna jump in on this as well, but the idea here was actually, instead of rezoning those properties away from neighborhood commercial two, leave it NC2, but whenever any development were to take place on those parcels in the future, require a certain amount of residential development as part of it. The second idea was to go with the ARC, the arterial. The second idea was to go with the ARC, the arterial residential commercial. And that is a lower residential density than what would be allowed in either NC2 or the multifamily zones. And so accompanying the rezone would be maybe in the next comprehensive plan amendment cycle, you would actually increase residential density allowed within the ARC zone. Because if you recall, one of the reasons why this whole thing started was the council is interested in bringing additional residential density along this area, especially since there hasn't been a huge amount of commercial development since it was zoned NC2. And then the third option goes back to what was provided to you earlier, which is to read zone from NC2 to either MF1, multifamily one, or multifamily two. We can get into this as, in as much detail as you like, but provided here is similar to what we talked about last time. It breaks out for each of these zones that are in question, what uses are allowed. So we, again, we can talk about this more if you like, but long story short, multifamily one is in this first column, multifamily two in the second, and they have the same uses. The only difference is the density that's allowed outright. The arterial residential commercial is down to 15 units per acre, but that's where within that one option we were just discussing. Maybe this gets the zone and then you make changes to what's allowed in residential density through your next comp plan cycle. That's one of the ideas tonight if you want to talk about it. Or staying with NC2, which is again, that's higher density for multifamily use, but requiring going forward, some, making sure that there is residential development within anything that were to be developed in the future along this corridor or these parcels. Number six is the Spring Brook neighborhood. And this is one that, if you recall, is, has been waiting now for a while for the FEMA flood map update and making sure that that's all finished and T's crossed and I's dotted. So the recommendation is to move this forward to next year's comprehensive plan cycle. And then we can finish it up with complete information coming back from FEMA and the updated floodplain analysis the city commissioned. Number seven is a single lot. And so we're actually recommending that this be removed from the package to go forward to the council because it is actually a site-specific rezone, subject to a different section of the municipal code. And then the last two are, again, text amendment, I'm sorry, number eight is a map amendment. That is rezoning the Sound Transit Station building, that parcel itself, to public institutional. And then the final one is one more text amendment, which is related to rail policies, which was requested by City Council members for this package. So where we sit is tonight, if you're ready, you would take action. And then it's scheduled to go forward to this council study session on May 26th, which is a joint meeting with you. And then the public hearing for the council is scheduled for June 1st with action on June 15th. So at this point, it's up to the commission to have discussion about whether they want to do any other amendments. And then there for you is the language of proposed motion. But again, recall that you need to decide what you'd like to do specifically with number five before you take action on this motion here. So with that, I'll stop sharing for a moment so you guys can discuss this better and step back, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Are you there? I can't see. I don't know what happened to all the attendees.
I stopped sharing, so we can see again.
Okay.
Bonnie and I are here.
Yeah, I know, but my screen just went with nothing. It just says Zoom, so I don't know what happened.
Can you click on speaker view?
It doesn't have that. And no, it's just. What the heck happened? Soon as you went out of your screen, it just goes to Zoom. Oh, here we go. Okay, got it. Okay, so before us, as you heard, we have this draft resolution in front of us. And so is there any questions to the staff at this time? On the proposal in front of us? And no questions at this time. So guess, Mr. Pearson?
So for number five, the comments from Mr. Remy, their concern was reducing the density. And so from NC2 to MF2, there's no change in density, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Bueller.
Remind the commission that Mr. Remy's comments were received after the close of the public hearing. They are not technically a part of the record. They will be submitted to the City Council when the City Council does conduct its public hearing. Just providing information to the commission.
Great. So.
We've lost our chair. Mr. Daniels, you froze. Oh, there we go.
Yeah, so number two of the number five proposal here is, if I heard you right, Tiffany, is tonight we could say, hey, let's change it to the ARC and then come back and increase the density of the ARC. Is that my understanding? So, look, you're muted.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, I apologize. Yes, that is correct, Mr. Chair. What you have in that option number two is a decision to rezone these parcels this evening to ARC and then recommend a change to what's allowed within that zone in terms of density to a higher level, maybe up to the 35 that you have in NC2 or multifamily two or some other number. The reason the city staff is not recommending that happen tonight at the same time is because it would affect other parcels within the city that haven't had any notification about that kind of a change to their zone. So we're suggesting that the parcels you discussed this evening just be within those that are part of application 05. And so changing their designation should you want to tonight and then have the conversation in your next round about density allowed within that zone.
And so that would also kind of do what the proposal originally was, is to restrict some kind of strip mall or strip type of commercial type of is, that the staff had kind of recommend, Mr. Bueller.
It does reduce the amount of commercial development, yes. It does allow for some commercial development, primarily offices. Some of the uses that are currently out there, that if they are zoned ARC, will become legal non-conforming uses. But if you were gonna go to straight MF zoning, multifamily, they would all become non-conforming uses.
Correct. Okay. So any other comments or questions? Or yes, Mr. Guerrero?
So I think the way, the way I look at the challenge is to, do we, do we want to be limiting commercial development in there or not? And that's kind of the gist of it, right? Right now, it's NC2 does allow lots of commercial, a fair amount of residential types. And the intent was to, initially was to limit the commercial development there. We did hear a lot of opposition to that from owners there. I think primarily, they wanted, the ones that I heard were, for example, one gentleman had purchased property to build, I think, a contractor yard. Of course, we have an auto part, an auto shop in there. There's some other current uses. The ones that are there can stay, but new development couldn't if we changed the zone. And so from my perspective, I'm in favor of keeping the density at the density that's allowed under the NC2 zone, which is 35 units per acre. But I'm also, my own personal thought is, I, I think I would prefer to not have more commercial development in there. So I would be in favor of the MF2 zone. I, I don't really like the ARC because it reduces density. And I think what Tiffany's suggesting is if we go to ARC, it would be that we would change all the ARC in the future to higher density. I don't think that's necessarily what we want to do either. So my, my own feeling is MF2 makes sense, although the NC2 is okay. If we're saying, well, we don't want to take away the rights of people that have property there now, the NC2 allows them to build, but it also allows the multifamily. So I would also, I wanted to point out, I am the, I need to recuse myself from 202002 and 202003. And the way this is written, we vote on the whole package. And so if that's the way we're voting, I'll recuse myself from voting on the whole package.
Okay, all right. Any comments after Mr. Guerrero? Yes, Ms. Connie Coleman-Lackady?
Allowed, I'm sorry, aren't we allowed to go each one and vote on each one if we want to? And then he can recuse himself for the ones that he can't, he needs to, and we just vote per line item?
We can do that as well. That's correct. So that's, that is an option. If that is that way, Mr. Guerrero can just recuse himself from 02 and 03 when the vote comes. And then we can go through the whole other, on the docket, the other ones and just vote as well. Mr. Bueller?
Another option would be whoever makes the motion, makes a motion to approve a docket of amendment, amendments minus the two that James Guerrero has mentioned where he has a conflict, then he can step out and then the rest of the commission can then vote on those two. So you have options. It's up to you.
Yep, great. Probably the other thing is, is that I guess before we go further is just a feeling of, or someone wants to make a motion on, you know, whatever way that we want to do this. If someone wants to make, Ms. Connie Coleman-Lackady?
I move that we go line item by line item and make a vote at each one.
Okay, okay. We will do that. I've got a motion on the table. Is, we got a second?
I'll second.
Oh, Mr. Pearson, okay, second. All right, any discussion on that or any, you know, no discussion? Okay, so we will go to number, we will vote line by line on these. And I will get back to my, who raised their hand? Did someone raise their hand?
Yeah. This is the first one.
So what we're gonna do then is we're gonna go line by one line and we will vote. So. Yes, Mr. Bueller.
Since we're on video, rather than saying line by line, may I suggest you say application number by application number?
Thank you, Mr. Bueller. We will go by application number. First application number that we have tonight is the CPA ZOA 202001 Plan Development District PDDs. So line number one. Excuse me, Mr. Bueller, I'm sorry, is 202001. So anyone who might make a motion on the recommend, Ms. Connie Coleman-Lackady?
You don't have to make a motion. We just need to approve each one of these.
Okay.
And then he needs to recuse himself when we get to the others, right? Isn't that correct?
Yep, okay, great. So we're looking for on CPA ZOA 202001, we're looking for all those in favor for approval of the recommendations. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? So it proves the 01 is staff recommendation to approve. So now, Mr. Guerrero, you can say it again if you would.
I'll recuse myself from 202002.
Okay, so we go to 202002? So we go to CPA ZOA 202002, Custer and Bridgeport privately initiated. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? That passes as recommended. Mr. Guerrero?
So I'll recuse myself from 202003 also.
Thank you. So CPA ZOA 202003, Custer and Bridgeport B, a city initiative, and that is recommendation to approve. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, number three approved. CPA ZOA 202004, 111th and Bridgeport West, city initiative. The recommendation is to approve. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that passes with approval. Okay, CPA ZOA 202005, the 59th Avenue West and Silicon Boulevard? So anyone who want to make a motion on one, two, or three, or any other option that you wish at this time?
I'll make a motion to approve CPA ZOA 202005 for option number three, to redesignate parcels to MF and rezone to MF2.
Okay, Mr. Pearson made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Guerrero, second. Any discussion? Hearing or seeing none? So we will go back to the, excuse me, the CPA ZOA 202005, 59th Avenue West and Silicon Boulevard. In the recommend, in the motion, then all those in favor with the amended motion on the table of number three, MF2, all those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that passes with MF2, number three option. CPA ZOA 202006, Spring Brook. It's the, we're gonna remove that from the docket?
Correct. It would be taking it out and recommending it be continued to the 2021 cycle.
So all those in favor of that recommendation to remove, all those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing, so that passes. So CPA ZOA 202008, the Lakewood Transit Station city initia- initiated. All those in favor with the recommendation of approval? All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm sorry, point of order, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Number seven is the single single parcel that needs to be removed from the package.
Okay, sorry, down here at the bottom here. Sorry, CPA ZOA 202007, Washington Boulevard and Interlochen. Recommendation is to remove from the docket. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Approve to remove from the docket. Now, 2020 ZOA 08, Lakewood Transit City initiated. It's recommendation for approval. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, approval pass. And CPA ZOA 202009, rail policies, city initiated. It's recommendation for approval. All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, that passes with approval as well. Oh, yes, Mr. Bueller?
Just because we are on YouTube and the like, I just wanted to point out if there is an audience, that the next step in the process is that now that the Planning Commission has made recommendations, this now moves forward to the City Council. City Council will conduct a study session, will hold a public hearing. City council will conduct a study session, will hold a public hearing, and then to make debate and take action on the matter. That's generally scheduled for June and July of twenty twenty with specific dates by uh looking at the uh city courts uh scheduled in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Viewer. Okay, uh, there is no public hearing tonight, and so we move to new business, number eight. So we got introduction of the annual development regulation amendment. Ms. Tiffany? Hope you're on mute.
All right, here we go. Try that again.
Okay.
Okay, here we are. So not to confuse this with your comprehensive plan package that you just passed, this is just a various and sundry collection of development regulations uh throughout the municipal code that either are are being proposed for amendment and update because state bills or state actions, state statutes or regulations have changed. Um, maybe it's something that an applicant has brought to the city staff's attention during the review process. Maybe these are things that the uh staff themselves have noticed over time, need changing or updating. Uh, or there are in this year's package as well, some cleanups to Title eighteen. If you recall the huge package that came through the commission last year to totally rewrite and reorganize eighteen A. Now we've had a little bit of time with people actually using the code and identifying areas where amendments are needed. So this is a a hodgepodge of amendments that we're bringing toward um some change by having it considered by the planning commission and then by the council. Oops. Oh, no. Apologies. I'm gonna have to jump in. I'll keep talking, but I'm gonna have to jump in and do a screen share of a different kind. So while I'm talking, um, what we're doing is uh walking through a number of chapters here. And as I just mentioned, it's all kinds of different topics, so I can go into more or less detail, just however you'd like to do this. Let me get you back to the screen share and you'll be able to see what I'm seeing. So one reason also why this is coming forward is that in eighteen A right now, that stated that on an annual basis, the uh city provides a copy of the current plan and development regulations to the assessor. Basically to make sure that as they do addressing, as they do property valuations, et cetera, they have accurate information as to how the parcels were zoned and dealt with during the development process. Uh, so we wanted to make sure before we did that this year that we had an accurate and updated code in order for them to receive. Um, and then at the bottom of this, you'll see that this year's package includes amendments to Title one, three, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen, which are all in some way related to development, and then eighteen A is the big one, that is the land use and development code per se. So a little more uh detail here, in Title one, there are changes to uh one point three six, that's the chapter, and then the sections oh two oh and point two six five, both of which are talking about how appeals are handled by the hearing examiner. There is a new proposed version of the multifamily tax exemption program. It is um comprehensively updated based on changes to the state program as well as other uh cities' use and and administration of the program. We're kind of updating what's in Lakewood's code. In Title twelve, there's just the addition of a definition. In Title fourteen, which is environmental protection, it's referring to updated state regulatory uh sites within Chapter fourteen oh two of the Lakewood Code. In Title fifteen, which is buildings and construction, it's updating um the use to allow use of international existing building code requirements in addition to the other codes that the city refers to. Title seventeen, which is subdivisions, it's um updating the references to the city's Title twelve within Chapter seventeen oh two. And then there's a new chapter being proposed regarding plat alterations under Chapter seventeen seventeen. So once a plat has been approved, over time, there may be reasons why uh an alteration to that final plat is needed. Uh, and so this is just setting out how that process is handled by the city. And then that most of the amendments are within Title eighteen and eighteen A because that's where most of uh this stuff is located in any event. The reason you have two lines here on this screen in blue is these two uh recommendations came to me after we got you your package. So these are new to what you had to review from last week, Ms. Deveraux's email. Uh, we have added a couple of definitions. We've updated a table uh at eighteen A twenty oh eight oh. There is um, once a permit is issued, when uh in some cases, there are situations where not all of the fees are paid and there's an outstanding fee balance that's due. And this uh segment would say, if you don't pay that within a certain amount of time, that permit's gonna be revoked. There is a removal of a section in eighteen A twenty. There's updating the SEPA appeal deadline within Chapter eighteen A twenty at section four hundred. There is an update of um Plan Development District application requirements within Chapter eighteen A thirty. There's eight to the range of density and minimum lot sizes allowed in the residential one zone. There's a removal of a section at eighteen A thirty six forty. There is a new section added under eighteen A forty regarding dangerous and objectional elements. There are allowed uses and footnotes changes within the eighteen A forty use tables, and we can walk through those in more detail if you like. And then another new one is um just a safety building, uh code safety addition regarding access to sidewalks and trash enclosures around multifamily development and commercial development. And then there's a uh some changes to parking standards within alleys in Chapter eighteen A eighty. So where would this sits is tonight, this is just an overview for you. You've got the information in front of you. Next week, we have a public hearing scheduled in front of the planning commission, and this has been duly advertised on um the website through our uh newspaper of record um, et cetera, et cetera. So it's been duly noticed. And then at this point, it's scheduled for action on June third by the commission, and then we'll move forward to council. Because we're in this weird time where we are doing these virtual meetings and virtual hearings, I just wanted to put this on the screen for those who may be watching and walk through it if you're listening. Um, because of the stay at home, stay healthy order, which has now been extended through the end of the month, uh, you can attend virtually planning commission meetings by watching them live, uh, or you can call in. And I believe we do have somebody there tonight. I just noticed that. And then in terms of public hearings specifically, those are taken by email only. Public testimony needs to be sent to the planning commission's clerk, Karen Deveraux, and her email is there. Kdeveraux@cityoflakewood.us, and those comments need to be received at least six hours prior to the meeting. So in this case, at least six hours before May twentieth uh six P M meeting for the planning commission, so by noon. And then those will be forwarded to the planning commission uh for your review that evening as part of the public hearing conversation. And with that, I will stop sharing. Those are the questions there. But again, within your packet, your full packet, you have all of the language, all of the draft amendments to uh the different chapters, and I believe we have another addition from Mr. Viewer.
Yes, Mr. Viewer.
I'm sorry, sorry, did not understand. Yes, his, those who didn't quite catch that, um, within the code, you do have also a new proposed number of sections regarding electrified fences. And that is because they are starting to be requested by developers and applicants at at the counter. So uh, there is language that was picked up by uh or picked up in this proposal from other cities that have already gone through a process to have it reviewed legally and adopt it. So that is in your package as well, yes.
Yes, good. Any other questions uh regarding to this topic, Mr. Guerrero?
Thank you. Um, so it, the the changes that are made are either crossed through or underlined. Is that correct within the eighteen A? Okay.
Yes, it is red line strikeout.
Okay, had, I did have um some questions. So on page forty eight, it's talking about accessory dwelling units.
I'm sorry, just a second, Mr. Guerrero. I'm gonna try to share a screen just so this makes sense for everybody. Let me get to that. Maybe they can get to that. There we go. So you said page forty eight within this document?
Yes.
Okay. And it disappeared. So go ahead.
So it's uh, so basically the size of of an accessory dwelling unit um used to say, if it's attached, it was allowed to be forty percent of the living space of the principal unit. And it's changed to um to six hundred to a, shall be limited to six hundred square feet excluding garage area. So in effect, if it's a, if an ADU is attached to a house, it can't be larger than six hundred square feet. And then if an ADU is not attached to a house, um, it can be up to a thousand. But I'm curious why that change was made. So previously, it would have been forty percent of the main house, and now it's a smaller number? Is there a?
Yeah, Mr. Viewer.
Okay, I got a couple things going on here. You have had a state legislature mandating ADUs. Okay, they ask you to statutes. The statutes are not quite the same as the deal deals of regulation. Generally, what we're proposing to here here.
No.
Not very well.
Um, so, Mr. Viewer, what he's saying, if, and I'll try to explain what he's saying. Please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Viewer. Um, there were two bills that have been passed in recent history by the state legislature, and they aren't exactly the same. They have two sets of requirements that are similar, similar but not identical. And so this is a way to try to comply with both, uh, even though they don't exactly say, say exactly the same thing. And given the size of homes within the city, by doing this, we're generally allowing an increase in what would be the size for either attached or detached ADUs. That's not a hundred percent sure, uh, true, but for much of the city, most of the city, that's true.
Yes, Mr. Guerrero.
Okay, and it, I I'm not, I don't have a super strong um uh dog in the fight here, if you will, but just a, just a note that I looked up on um Rent Cafe because it had some average numbers of of just apartments. And so an average studio apartment right now is five hundred and fourteen square feet, and average one bedroom is seven hundred and fourteen square feet. So by making the ADU six hundred maximum, we've kind of set it at a pretty small size for a, for a living unit. But I don't, if it, if there's other reasons why it should be that size, I, I don't have a strong, a strong opinion, I guess.
Yes, Mr. Viewer.
Based on the size of the principal dwelling, there are also lot coverage standards and um purview surface standards and other design requirements that'll come into play as well as just this, this um statement within this code about how big the building can be.
Okay, okay, I had, had a couple, couple more items. So and um, so on page forty nine, it's talking about the ADUs also. Um, and there um, the uh, I'll go ahead and read it. It says, um, any owner occupant seeking to establish an ADU shall apply for approval in accordance with these procedures. And then it lists a series of requirements. Um, and one of the requirements is that the owner, the owners of the property need to live in one of the units six months of the year, which, which that's, that's been part of the code. But what, what struck me, and it's been part of the code, and I just hadn't read it before this way, is that if, if a proponent comes in who's not an owner occupant, I would read this as they don't have to comply with this section. And I know that's not the intent.
Mr. Viewer.
So state law per the legislature this last session is requiring actually that the subsection M, as in mother, um, one uh will be removed out of your package. So that's a state law change that we have to follow.
Mr. Guerrero.
Um, great, thank you. So um, on page fifty, it talks about uh standards for boarding houses, and everything is underlined there. So does that mean that's a fully new element?
Correct.
Mr. Viewer.
This is one of those Scrivener things that we felt actually wasn't enough of a Scrivener problem to handle that way.
Yes, Mr. Guerrero.
So I've read this now, and it's a, yeah, I'm getting kind of caught up on the code. One of the, one of the things that it has in here is it, it uh talks about off-street parking. So I'll read it. It says, parking requirement. At a minimum, there must be one off-street parking stall per occupant. An owner may reduce the off-street parking requirements if an affidavit is signed that an occupant does not own a vehicle. Um, by my way of thinking of a boarding house, maybe um not super long term. And so we've got a requirement in there that requires an affidavit for a person that may not be there very long. Um, and so basically, I guess I'm, I'm questioning whether that has any uh validity, if you will. Do you have a, uh, so if you have a boarding house, it has potential for ten people in it, the parking requirement would be ten. You could reduce it to nine if you had one person say they don't have a car, but it's only a temporary thing. And so I'm curious if that's just a kind of a paperwork nightmare. I'm not suggesting a change. It, it just seems like that um it may, the, the parking might want to be revisited at some point on a, on a boarding house.
Hey, all right, any other questions? All right, Tiffany, any other information at this time?
Not on this package, other than to say, come your um materials for next week. So when the hearing happens on the twentieth, there will be the additional information on those two blue highlighted items that came, or we were able to send you this week's stuff. We'll make that change that Mr. Viewer just mentioned about um the removal that's needed on page forty nine. Uh, other than that, uh, it'll be up for a public hearing next Wednesday, and hopefully we'll get some email uh public comment.
Great. All right, we'll move to the other new business is the first um by any own review of the downtown subarea plan, plan action in hybrid form base code.
Yes, and one more time, give me just a second to get
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Viewer. Okay, did you hear what that was, Tiffany?
I'm sorry, I think he said he's going to leave the meeting, come back to see if that helps with his.
Okay.
Line.
Thank you.
All right, so can everyone see one more presentation here?
Yep.
Okay, so this is the, uh, the first time that we have to do a review every two years of the downtown subarea plan. And it was uh October of twenty eighteen when this package was adopted by the city council. And so here we are with our first review uh coming up on two years later. And this, if you remember, is three pieces, actually. There's the down plan itself. There's a planned action ordinance, which is based in SEPA, and this is the environmental uh pre-planning. So there was a So there was assumptions made about how much density, how many jobs, how the roads were going to be built, incorporated into this single thing that was reviewed under SEPA with the idea that as long as new actual projects coming forward fell within those assumptions, they would not have to go through SEPA individually. And so that piece is under review tonight, as is the hybrid form-based code. So Chapter 18A, we were just talking about, is the big package of most of the area of the city is governed under. 18B is the downtown package, and it has its own design criteria. For instance, if you remember, the Colonial Plaza had some specific things. There's other areas within the sub-area that have little tweaks based on how the council wanted that to get developed over time. There are two ordinances that require this review every two years. Ordinance 695 talks about monitoring the impact of the downtown code in implementing the sub-area plan at least every two years, and then amend it as needed to improve the outcomes. And then ordinance number 6, 696, excuse me, talks about monitoring and review the progress of development within the planned action area to make sure it's consistent with what was assumed. It also says that this will come through the SEPA responsible official in conjunction with the comprehensive plan reviewer docket cycle. We were able to manage to get this on the same evening of your docket, and then it will go forward to the council once you take your action. And then there was a conversation, as you see at the bottom, about specifically the transportation mitigation fees will also be reviewed every two years. What we as staff are recommending to the commission tonight is, given the fact that this is only actually less than two years since this whole package was adopted, it's been less than 18 months. We're suggesting that no changes be made in this cycle, but that next review for changes would be in 2022, and it would be handled similarly, meaning it would come before you, and then it would go to council as they are looking at their biennial budget, because part of the review relates again to those mitigation fees which are included in the budget. So what I did want to walk you through, though, is some of the things that have happened since the downtown subarea plan package was adopted. Some of these you're probably aware of, but I'll just work, work our way through this. Last September, the Colonial Plaza was completed along Motor Avenue, and it was the one that was called Festival Street in the downtown plan. So there's urban design, upscale improvements, it's a public gathering space, and it's intended to be where the Lakewood Night Market is going to meet. That was going to start actually, I want to say, in April, but because of COVID-19, that has not happened yet. It will though, and it will be held, held in this venue. The other things that have occurred under the city catalyst bucket is the addition to the city's transportation improvement program of the transportation improvements identified in the sub-area. So improving Gravelly Lake to include the Green Street Loop. Again, that public street idea for the Lakewood Town Center Boulevard, adding a roundabout on 59th, adding bicycle lanes and signalized intersections in several places, and then converting to a left lane only on 100th and Lakewood Drive to remove the split phase there. So the way this was designed is the total amount that you see there in the column second from right is about $29 million. But when the council created the transportation mitigation fee, the intent was to have projects on these specific roads within the sub-area that affect these projects to pay half of their cost. And then the other half of the cost of the projects would be handled on the public side, meaning the city would be responsible for either securing grants or using general fund dollars to cover the other half of the cost. The other thing that has happened since is that the Parks Legacy Plan, which is at city council right now for being adopted in an update form, includes now the Central Park and also the Green Street Loop as part of the park scheme for the city. And so that's going to move forward here within the next month or so to fruition at the city council level. This is a map that shows you where development has happened since the sub-area plan was adopted, and you see it's kind of all over the sub-area. There are 23 projects altogether, none of which have gone outside of the Planned Action Ordinance, meaning they've all fallen within the limits and the assumed project types and densities and intensities that were in the planned action itself. There's also been a number of new businesses opening. There were others that were intended to be open by now, but they're either on hold or are kind of on the brink right now, given COVID. But what you see here is that there has been activity within this sub-area since adoption in October of 2018. In terms of transportation mitigation fees, so far, it's been about $140,000 that have been collected. And then because of the way the mitigation program was set up, 12 of the 23 projects did not have any mitigation fee at all, because the city says, if a project is coming into an existing building and the transportation trips to and from that building with the new use are less than or equal to the old use that was in that, you're not going to pay any additional fee. It's only when there's a brand-new building with additional trips to the area or in an existing building, there's an addition of new trips above what was in there before where a mitigation fee is required. So again, what is happening right now is the, the Community and Economic Development Department has recommended to you, the planning commission, no changes be made to any of these three parts of the downtown subarea package. But we do have a public hearing scheduled for next week, and the reason is, first, if you, as a planning commission, think that there needs to be some amendments made, that would be the time to talk about it. And/or if the public comes to you next week and says, hey, this, this is what we think should change within the plan itself, the policies within the Planned Action Ordinance regarding the SEPA intensities and such, or within the hybrid form-based code, that Title 18B that they feel should be amended. That's going to be the opportunity for the public to come and tell you that. If everything goes where you're able and comfortable to do so, at your next meeting on June 3rd, you would be taking action on whatever your recommendation will be to the city council, and then they pick it up in June and move forward with action on their part. So unless, any questions? That's it from me.
Great, thank you. So now we go to, Mr. Bueller, did you want to talk about the adult family homes?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I don't have anything on adult family homes unless you want me to talk about it.
No, didn't you ask about, to talk about some adult?
Oh, I wanted to talk about not adult family homes, but accessory dwelling units, which we've already discussed.
Okay, no problem. So Mr. Bokey is not on, so we don't have anything from him. How about any other reports from staff?
No other reports from us, Mr. Chair.
Okay, how about any other fellow commissioners, any reports or comments? Hearing or seeing nothing at this time. I then will say, no other comments, all good. We'll see you then on May, Mr. Bueller.
Just very briefly, I, I just wanted to let you know that Tiffany knows more about this than I do. But we're beginning to have the initial discussions at the Growth Management Coordinating Committee on Population allocations to cities and county in the Pierce County area. So stay tuned for, for more on this particular topic. I just wanted to let you know that it is, it is occurring. This happens every five to seven years, and it's about that time.
All righty, hearing or Mr. Wegman? Well, unmute yourself.
I'm just trying to do that. I couldn't get my little cursor in the right place. Sorry. Hey, what's, what is the rule on fences? Is that, is, is that handled by any of the policies we have, or is that handled by the individual neighborhoods, or is that a fight between neighbors?
It's all three. If it's in a private development, it's sometimes fences are controlled by HOAs. The city's regulatory environment under 18A does have requirements for fences. It determines the maximum height. In the front yard, for example, the fence height is only four feet. And then the side yards and rear yards, the maximum height of a fence is six feet. We are making some recommendations that fence heights be increased in industrial zones, I-1, I-2, and IBP, and certain types of fences be allowed that are currently not addressed. We also addressed issues such as razor wire and barbed wire on fences. We also do allow for fences to exceed the four-feet height limitation in residential zones that are adjacent to arterial and arterial connector streets, where you see large volumes of traffic. So there's a whole potpourri of regulations on fences. If a fence is higher than six feet, it requires a building permit. Otherwise, fences do not require permits.
Okay.
Good. Okay, seeing no other questions at this time, we'll call the meeting of the planning commission adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.